I thank to this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those while working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Thank you. Remain standing for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, just.
Please be seated. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counsel Kennedy?
Here.
Counsel Leahy?
Here.
Counsel Mercia?
Here.
Counsel Milanoz?
Here.
Counsel Noon?
Here.
Mayor Samaras?
Here.
Counsel Cirillo?
Here.
Counsel Conway?
Here.
Counsel Elliott?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Do we have a moment of silence? Counsel Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Doc and Chamber for Kathy O'Connor, who was one of my dearest friends. Most of you probably don't know her, but she knew all of you. Kathy was a faithful follower of every city council meeting. When any council meeting was on, she never answered the phone, nor the knock on the door. She always told her family and friends not to call her on Tuesday evenings, as she would frequently say, "Her favorite soap opera is on," and she did not want to be disturbed. She was smart as a whip. Kathy attended the Immaculate Conception Grammar School and was a graduate of Lowell High School. Before her retirement, Kathy was a well-known mortgage broker with the Northern Mass Telephone Credit Union for 37 years. They are now known as Align Credit Union. Kathy is survived by her sister Jackie Healy and her husband Bob Healy, two nephews Robert and Kevin, three grand nephews and three grand nieces, her brother-in-law William Keegan. She was also predeceased by her beloved sister Patricia O'Connor Keegan. My sincere condolences to her family, relatives, and many friends. She will be truly missed. I would also like to offer a moment of silence in Doc and Chamber to all those who have passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Please Doc in the chambers. Next, we have the minutes of the city council meeting of February 14th for acceptance. I need a motion to accept the place of file by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Conway. Motion passes. Next, under Auditor's Business, a vote to reappoint Brian Perry to the position of City Auditor, continuing from the February 14, 2019 meeting. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. To reappoint Brian Perry to the position of City Auditor in the city of Lowell.
Mayor?
Any discussion?
I move to reappoint Brian Perry to a reposition as the City Auditor in Lowell.
Second by Ms. Cirillo. Second. Any discussion? Ms. Counsel Noon, please come to.
Yes, Vice Mayor, through you, Vice Mayor, question to Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry, about a month ago, I asked for a report on the school department regarding the audit procedures that were taken care of. My concern was that we had an audit done on the school department budget, and we also had the new CFO look at what regulations were not followed, the concerns that were raised regarding budget procedures, and what put us into, we'll say, what became problematic for the Lowell School Department, because basically there was, when you look at the entire thing, a $5 million shortfall that had to be overcome. And I haven't gotten that report, so I'm concerned about that. I need to know when that, will we receive that report, and is there any status report on that matter?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Vice Mayor. No, the report is in progress. I expect to have it within the next couple of weeks at the latest. I've been working on it. It's a pretty lengthy process to try and pull everything together, because there's a lot of issues to address from the report from Clifton, Larson, and Allen.
Well, my concern on, tonight's important, I mean, to vote, it's a vote concerning, you know, the next three years and the issue-
Mr. Mayor, can you speak up? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're getting older, Mr. Conway.
Some of us.
My, you know, my concern is about the budget, okay? And my concern is that what, we will not be put in this position again. That's my major concern. In other words, the position of auditor is very important. I mean, you do take care of the city side, but also there is a responsibility to the school side as to ensuring that the regulations are followed in a proper fashion. Do you have, I mean, is there any findings or anything that could be discussed at this point?
I mean, I guess, I'm sorry, through you again, Mr. Vice Mayor. I guess to try and, I guess, sum up the past three years for me is the school department's been the biggest fight for me personally. The city council gives an appropriation of, for the last three years, about roughly $160, $165 million. And I do defend and work as hard as I can to ensure that they do not overspend a dime from the appropriation that city council has given them. I believe there was three real items on the Clifton, Larson, and Allen report that, according to their own adjustments that Clifton, Larson, and Allen had made, would have put them in the Clifton, Larson, and Allen's perspective of the school department overspending by, I believe the number was about 1.8 million. I personally am not making those adjustments that Clifton, Larson, and Allen have entered. They had about $160,000 or so, I believe, from unpaid invoices. Those invoices had not hit the finance spreadsheets because it's never been properly procured. According to the UMSR, which is the University of Massachusetts Accounting Standards, it's got to be properly encumbered for it to hit it. That's why when you see the report that I provide for the year-to-date expenditures, you're going to see what's available, what's encumbered, which essentially means it's reserved to be expended for a specific purpose by going through the proper channels to provide purchasing. Once it's then been reserved, it goes through a process where it's been ordered, received, and if it's been approved, then they get the invoice, the invoice gets paid, and that amount then moves into the year-to-date expended bucket. That's an issue where I personally haven't paid those invoices because schools never properly procured them. What they need to do is comply with Mass General Law. Yeah.
Not to interrupt, but that's the issue. I mean, can you say to me that you'll be able to put in place those mechanisms that will assure that that would not happen? Again, that's, that's my issue, of identifying those problems.
That's been a known issue with the schools, and they, it's, I continue to follow and obey as best I can the laws prescribed by the state. There's issues that I continually advise the schools of what they need to do, whether they can comply with it, is on the schools, but I continually remind and work with them and train with them to ensure that they know what the guidance is and they know what the laws are, that they have to work with them. And I, I do, I'm very well aware of my position to ensure that they do not overspend their appropriation as provided by the city council.
But I'm looking at, do you feel that you can create the mechanisms that are necessary to assure that you get that information? In other words, you can't do what you don't see. I understand that. But are we going to have the mechanisms in place? Because it's vital. I mean, the school department, we, I think we've resolved a lot of the issues, okay? But a lot of the issues shouldn't have come to bear. So the question is, my issue is, bring back to the Lowell School Committee, is that we will have mechanisms in place to deal with those issues. That's why this report's so-
No, and I understand, I think it's a pretty lengthy report to put together. I'm working on it to get it, to get it off my plate, honestly, as soon as I can, too, and in front of the council, so they're aware of everything that I see and what I do when I work with them. I do believe that there are processes and stopgaps in place, and we continually work to make sure that, that they're complied with. My office cannot, should not pay any invoices that haven't been properly procured. The whole city knows that. It's been an issue since it was on the report from a year ago on Powers and Sullivan's management letter, and I continue to remind and work with every department, not just the school department, to comply with their appropriation, to live within their means, and to work with them, and I try and do my best to work with everyone as well.
I understand that, but the thing is, I can recall at times when the auditor, you know, going to a conference or something like that, and I'm saying, "I haven't been paid in seven months," and the auditor, no, stated to me, "Did you file Form 50 debt?" Whatever. Do you understand? So the thing is, they had in place certain things. I just want to be assured of that.
I understand, and I, again, I try to work with every department. I try to make myself as available as I can to answer any questions, and one of my main goals is to remove any obstacles I have with everybody I work with, so the process is clean and is easy to get through. I don't try and, I don't believe in any bureaucratic forms and extra steps and hurdles to jump through. I believe that what's in place and what's been prescribed by the law is what we need to follow. I don't believe in making people's jobs harder.
Yeah, but the thing is, what I want to see in place, what we need to see in place, is some insurance that people are going to follow those procedures. You know, that's, that's what I'm looking for.
No, and I totally expect people I work with, when I give them guidance on what needs to be done, I do expect them to follow. I believe that, and obviously, as I said, there's, there's policy in place, but we're only going to pay bills that are properly procured and according to the law. I mean, there are stopgaps in place, there's law in place, there's policy procedures in place, and the city and schools have both been reminded many times of what needs to be done, of what my sort of things are.
Well, I think at some point, we'll have to have a meeting with the school committee, you know, to talk about, you know, what can we empower you with to ensure that, you know, stopgap measures are in place, but that we follow those stopgap measures, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Elliot?
Yeah, so these issues were raised in FY17 and FY18 management letters, so it's also incumbent for, when we get these reports, as we do here, we hold subcommittee meetings to implement the weaknesses that are pointed out, Mr. Mayor. I mean, you can't blame the auditor for, there is a separation of duty, and we do ours, and there is due diligence, and there are some checks and balances. We can't be, we can't, if we don't know invoices that are not paid, there's not much that we can do other than work after the fact. So there, it is incumbent, there is a business administrator for a reason. You know, at, at budget time, on indirect costs, it's the school committee and UMSR that has to press the issue if they see these significant variances in indirect costs. So it's the revenue, there are controls in place. There's also a people factor, an individual factor, that, you know, there's communication that has to take place. So I, I just want to make it clear that when we do get our independent analysis from our independent auditor, there are, there are notations, there are items that we address, we still have reconciliation in the Treasurers Office, we continue to work on it. It's also incumbent upon the school committee to do the same. When you see a weakness, you have to address it. You just can't keep, you can't kick that can. And a couple of these are exactly that instance. You can't be violating procurement laws. So I just want to get, I'm going to support the auditor. I think that he has done a good job since he's been there, working on weaknesses or any control items along with the CFO. You know, if we have an issue with something on the city side, we bring it up, and, you know, we continue to narrow, you know, anything that comes in the management report. So I'm going to support you. I think that you have done a good job. We see less and less comments in our management letter, and I think that's a sign that we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Counsel Elliot. Counsel Kennedy? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was happy to make the motion to reappoint Mr. Perry to the position for an additional three years. I think he's done an outstanding job. I think the city is lucky to have him. I have found him during my time here, for, and for his time here, to be very cooperative, to be very informative and helpful, and, and I think the city is lucky to have him as a city auditor. Thank you, Counsel Kennedy. Counsel, uh, Mayor Samaras?
I mean, just for the record, my point is not to blame the city auditor. The purpose of my report was, we had some issues with the school department budget. We need his help to ensure that this does not happen again. So I was asking about the report, because I'm concerned about the report, because hopefully it will have, you know, measures to prevent or to help us or help the school department be ensured that financially we will not be put in the position that we've been, we were recently put into. Simple as that. I just need the report, we need the report, then work with the school committee, with your report, as to what measures, what steps have to be taken to assure there's clarity in all issues. We need to do this for our tax-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you, just quickly, I just wanted to thank you, Brian, for your service, and in the time that you've been here, I found your office and yourself very cooperative, too, so I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Leahy. Counsel Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just want to say, as everyone said, that I'm very impressed with Brian, myself. Let me just ask through you to Mr. Perry here, do you send like a microchip, a microfilm or something to Boston when people retire, like from the school department, school teachers? You send anything to do with retirement to Boston?
Mr. Perry?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Vice Mayor. There's certain steps that the city side, when a, when a teacher retires, there's certain pieces of basically a report that gets filled out by my office, and other pieces that need to be filled out by the school department side.
You oversee that, right?
Yes.
Okay, you oversee that. It's your responsibility to know what's going on in your department. The reason I'm asking this question is because when I was the mayor, something wasn't working right, and I would have, I don't know, five calls every week, to the point where I had a meeting with teachers in the mayor's reception room, because everything that was coming from the auditor's office to Boston was so messed up that it was mind-boggling, that we had to straighten it out, and it was just something that you couldn't even imagine, the confusion, the, everybody was receiving retirement, and it was all wrong. Now, I have never received a call from anybody since you've been the city auditor stating that, so I'm very, very proud that somebody's doing something right in that department and you're overseeing it, and for that alone, I'll thank you, because that was a nightmare.
I'm sorry, I just want to add one thing, just quickly, is that I think the key word you used there is oversee, because Tricia Lamar in my office is essentially the head of payroll, and she does, she does a wonderful job with that, and we keep the lines of communication open with the schools to make sure-
That's right. But if anything's wrong there, you're the one that would hear it, right? And I don't hear anything, so-
Absolutely, yeah, no, everything in my office falls on me.
Congratulations to your office for that. I'm very proud that we don't have phone calls like I did when I was mayor. It was a nightmare, and we don't have, so you don't understand what could be happening that isn't. So thank you for the silence. We're not having a problem. Thank you.
Counsel Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I totally agree with Counsel Mercia. For decades, we've had, we've had issues, and again, I haven't heard anybody discuss any problems, so I want to say that, Mr. Perry, I think that the, the time that I have been with you, and I've met you, and I've sat down, we've talked about different things, I find you to be very informative, very professional, and also, you know, be able to explain things to someone that is certainly not at your level. So again, I appreciate the, the good job that you've done, and I think the city of Lowell is, is very lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Conway. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, on the motion.
Uh, Counsel-
Mr. Vice Chair?
Counsel Elliot, hang on a minute.
Before we, we proceed, I would like to have the, the CLA audit, I'd like to have that, I'd like to make a motion, well, I guess I should make it after this vote. I think the Audit Oversight Subcommittee should, should take that report and, and have a meeting to discuss it with the auditor.
Can, can we do that after the roll call?
Makes sense.
Yep. Counsel, uh, Mr. Clerk?
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Milanoz?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Congratulations, Mr. Perry.
Counsel Elliot, your motion, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that the Clifton, Larson, and Allen report be referred to the Audit Oversight Subcommittee.
Do a here second. Second by Counsel Conway. Are those in favor? Roll call, right?
You don't need a roll call.
No need to, okay. Mayor Samaras, you can take your podium back.
Next, really for the public hearings. Right now, we'll go to Communications and City Manager, motion responses. First motion response, traffic flow Route 110 intersection. Counsel Noon?
Thank you very much, Madam Manager, for the report. Natasha, I've done a great job on that, and along with it, there was a recommendation by DPD. Let me just find out, do you have recommendations? I'd like to see if we can adopt those recommendations, that is an ongoing work that we have to do with the Mass DOT, so that, you know, we don't lose sight of it, the importance of making sure that, you know, that we continue to address the issues that was alerted by, to us by the resident of the area, so.
Through, Madam Manager? Thank you, through you, to the counsel. We will follow the recommendation of DPD and contact Mast dot regarding this particular project, and we'll come back to the counsel with any communication and report as to where we stand with Mast dot.
Sir, any further discussion? Next, we have motion response, Dwelling House of Hope. Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy with the, the report, Madam Manager, and I would just, I would just hope that as, as the, as the search goes on for a suitable location for the Dwelling House of Hope, that the council will be updated as that goes on.
Thank you, through you, to the counsel. We will keep the counsel up to date. I know Planning and Development has met with them, suggested certain properties, and we will work with them as, as we move forward, and we'll keep this as a report of progress going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, motion response, Hamilton Utility Work. Counsel Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, God bless you.
Thank you.
I did get a wonderful report here, and it's telling me that the south side of the Hamilton Canal Innovative District is ready for immediate development. Well, if you ask me what side of this room was the north side, I have no clue as to what we're talking about, so what parcel numbers are on the south side that are ready? They call it site-ready and prepared for private investment. Which, what's the south side?
Joe Genowitz is here and can answer. Joe, if, I don't know if you have a chart with you, but if you can even talk it through, that would be helpful.
Sure, so the south side of the district is everything below the Lower Potaga Canal, so that includes parcels eight and nine, which wind development will be on, 110 Canal, which is already occupied, the Appleton Mills, which is already occupied, parcels two, three, eight, and four, so right near where Utopian Park is, and parcel one, adjacent to the courthouse.
And so, we're talking about the other side now. The work is currently being performed with projects to be completed by the end of June, so that would be parcels 11, 16, and 17. So are we saying that's like the north side?
Correct, yeah, so everything on the north side of the Lower Potaga Canal. 14 on the, on the map as well.
14 and 15?
14 is the garage, and 15 is the National Park Visitor Center parking lot.
So, when we say that the south side is done, that means all the utilities, like sewer, water, gas, is all hooked up?
Yep, everything is ready to be right connected, right to the side.
Are we going to see any development over there with buildings or anything happening?
Sure, wind development is going to be building on eight and nine. So they're looking to go forward in the spring. That's the latest that we've heard.
So we're talking about eight and nine, and wind development is, both of those parcels are-
Correct.
All right. And what about John Healy is?
He's on the north side.
On the north side, so he's waiting.
So he's been waiting for the utilities to be completed on the north side.
Are we saying it's going to be completed, the tie-ins, by June?
June 30, yep.
Okay, and we did receive information with funding received through Mass Works, 4.7 million, and EDA, 2.5 million, the city was able to move forward, right?
Right, that's what's-
I just want to see more happening there. That's why I made this motion, so, because I did not know where we were as far as utility tie-ins, but this kind of outlines it, so thank you very much. That's what I wanted to know.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll say-
Counsel Mercia? Thank you. We're going to go back to the general public hearings, 4.1, vote to accept Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Paragraph 5B. I'd like to open up the hearing. For those in favor, anyone who wants to speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. I need a motion to adopt.
Move or pro?
By Counsel Milanoz, second by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Milanoz?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Okay, next-
Mr. Mayor, I should have asked a question before this, but it's just for clarification. On the last paragraph, the last, the last paragraph of the statute, it says that a two-thirds vote of the body of the city of town is required for any dedication of this fund. Is that correct? So if you want to spend money, it requires two-thirds? Okay.
Well, isn't that for the stabilization fund vote? Is that what the two-thirds vote would be?
Yeah, let me turn this over to the CFO.
I just want to make sure, it's not a 5-4. I mean, it's not just a simple majority to-
Right, right.
To expend any money out of this is a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, Mr. Baldwin can explain.
Thank you, Madam Manager. That's correct, and this new language in the statute is what the public hearing is for, to accept, but just as you mentioned, to transfer money out of the fund, like with any other stabilization, requires a supermajority vote by the council.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Thank you. Next, we go to 4.2, Ordinance Quarterly Traffic, January 2019. Open hearing, for those who want to speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Now, anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt?
So move.
Counsel Mercia? Second by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Milanoz?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Okay, next-
Mr. Mayor, I should have asked a question before this, but it's just for clarification. On the last paragraph, the last, the last paragraph of the statute, it says that a two-thirds vote of the body of the city of town is required for any dedication of this fund. Is that correct? So if you want to spend money, it requires two-thirds? Okay.
Well, isn't that for the stabilization fund vote? Is that what the two-thirds vote would be?
Yeah, yeah. Let me turn this over to the CFO.
I just want to make sure, it's not a 5-4. I mean, it's not just a simple majority to-
Right, right.
To expend any money out of this is a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, Mr. Baldwin can explain.
Thank you, Madam Manager. That's correct, and this new language in the statute is what the public hearing is for, to accept, but just as you mentioned, to transfer money out of the fund, like with
there, and the state trooper will direct them to go to Exit 4, which is Plain Street, and then route them around and through the cemetery to get to Industrial Ave, the kind of the back way off Plain Street behind Target. There are going to be multiple detail officers from the Lowell Police on-site on Industrial Ave, at both the entrance and exit to the facility, at the entrance to the hotel parking lot, and kind of a roaming detail officer to ensure that traffic is flowing smoothly, that folks all know where they're going, and that nobody's attempting to park on Industrial Ave and block traffic there. They've prepared a detailed traffic flow plan through their parking lot, which has been reviewed by both the traffic engineer and Lowell Police, and we're satisfied that that will be handled appropriately through their parking lot in a way to mitigate any kind of impacts on entering and exiting their parking lot. They plan on having a satellite lot off-site, where if the parking onsite is, is full, folks will be directed to a satellite lot off-site. They will have a shuttle from, to and from that satellite lot, and there will be Lowell Police officer on detail at that satellite lot as well. They will have a tent outside of the facility for queuing, so the exterior, the line on the exterior of the facility will be tented. There will be restroom facilities in the exterior of the building. They plan on doing as much identification and product choices, choices in-line as possible, so as to minimize the time that folks have to be inside, oh, excuse me, inside the facility. I believe they, they currently have a six-and-a-half-minute turnaround time for their medical patients from ID at the door to exiting, and they hope to keep that timeframe per patient. It's, so, all the stakeholders involved, Lowell Police, the state police, the traffic engineer, and DPD staff are all more than satisfied with the plans that are in place. We think that everything that we could possibly do to mitigate the impacts of traffic has been done. As the manager mentioned, Patriot Care plans to open on a Saturday, so that we will have a Saturday and Sunday without business traffic or workday traffic, in an effort to try and identify if there are any gaps that we've missed in the traffic planning, and be able to implement changes before they implement, before they impact any kind of workday traffic. I would note for the record, at this point in time, there are eight other facilities, there are eight dispensaries open in the Commonwealth. The traffic for those dispensaries is significantly lower than the very large volumes of traffic that we saw at the opening of the first two facilities in Lester and North Hampton last November. In fact, I think the last four or five facilities that have opened, there has not been kind of a statewide notice of any kind of traffic issues, and in fact, there haven't been any significant traffic issues for those facilities. So, at this time, staff is satisfied with the traffic plan. We believe it's the best plan that we can do, and we are prepared to meet as soon as, as the days after opening, to make any changes if they're necessary, and Patriot Care has indicated that they're willing to, to meet with us and have any kind of further conversations that we need to evaluate whether or not the traffic plan is working.
Thank you. Council Leahy?
Thank you. Thank you, through you. So, I was going to ask, traffic's died down at the other places throughout the state?
It has.
Significantly?
Significantly. I know, I think the general numbers that they were seeing during the first times they were open was, you know, 1,200 to 1,500 patients per day at those two sites. The havoc traffic that most sites are seeing now is less than half of that, 500, 400, 500 per day. We're prepared to handle, based on these methods, and the significantly more than 500 per day. So, we're, I think the idea would be, we attempt to over-prepare, and Patriot Care has been very open and upfront about wanting this to go as smoothly as possible, and to have the smallest impact as possible, and they're willing to, to step up to the plate to make sure that we can, we can mitigate the traffic if there's any concern.
And they've made a distinction somehow for people coming in for medical versus recreational?
Yeah, and that's required in the regulations, that the medical and the recreational are treated differently. They are, they do have, are maintaining handicap spots in front of the building that will be for the medical patients, and that, once they enter, enter the facility, the regulations do require that medical care providers have a certain stock of, of product available for medical, so that that doesn't get sold out if there's a large number of recreational products sold.
Okay. And they're planning on opening this weekend, you think?
No, not this weekend, but we expect in the next couple of weeks. You know, the plan is during...
Possibly on the ninth.
Possibly, yeah. A week from Saturday, but...
All right.
We're still awaiting certain results for inspections.
All right. So, one other question would be, just out of curiosity, is it possible for anybody on the council to get a tour before they open with you?
Yeah, so, so Patriot Care is here, and I see them nodding affirmatively, so yes, and, and we will arrange with them. I know they've offered in the past, and we've tried to put that together for the subcommittee, and we'll certainly invite the council, so we'll, we'll communicate with them and the council to try and arrange that.
Okay. I didn't know if you could hear me. Is this Jerry Nutt's mic? It's turned off.
This is Jerry's over here.
All right. Thank you.
I thought you were going to ask for a sample. I had me worried a little bit, Counselor. Council Milonazza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to, to Eric. First of all, it looks like, from reading the report, that everybody's done a very good job in putting this parking and traffic plan together. My question has to do with whether or not this gets actually filed with the Cannabis Control Commission, or does it stay local?
So, my understanding is that prior to the final approval from the Cannabis Control Commission, for them to go, to go operable, they will reach out to the city manager's office and make sure that the city is, is satisfied with the planning that has been done for the opening. And so, we will be prepared to respond to them when they...
Great. Okay. Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Manager?
Just, thank you, and I, I want to thank everybody who's been involved in this plan, Patriot Care, who's been extremely cooperative, really going beyond what may, some may say was required, but important to the city of Lowell. The police department, Deputy Superintendent Goulner, and Chief Richardson, and their team, looking at this, making sure not only what's being requested, and I think it's two shifts of five detailed police officers each day, that the police department can fulfill that, and there's, there's confidence that that can be done. The state police, who are also cooperating to, to take care of the flow off the connector, and basically, and Natasha looking at it and making sure that, you know, we're, we're providing ample traffic flow. There is, I don't know that you mentioned this, but in addition to the satellite lot that will be off-site, there is also another lot that they've leased, in addition to their own parking lot, so, to address these parking considerations that other communities have run into. So, you know, we haven't done this before, but we're trying to plan as best we can for, for what this may bring to the city.
Thank you. Council Elliot and Council Leahy?
Thank you. Who's paying for the details? Patriot Care is, right. That's good, that's good to know. I guess I just have a question to the traffic engineer. I'm wondering why would, we would be directing traffic off Route 3 or 495, wherever the split is, through a very busy corridor, and that being Chelmsford Street, Route 110?
So, the, the thought process was that we wanted to try and disperse the traffic as many ways as we could. The concern being if everybody comes in off the connector on Exit 3, that's a very short queue, and the state police have, have let us know, there's a, there's a crest, vertical curve, right there, which means when traffic is backed up, people coming up on the crest can't actually see that. That's where they have accidents very, very frequently during rush hour. So, the concern was, if everybody comes that way, we're going to have an accident, and traffic's going to back up on the connector and then onto 495. So, the thought process was, we'll send people to Exit 4, we'll have people come in off Route 3 and 110, and just try to spread traffic out. The, the hope is that this is, you know, as Eric said, we think there's going to be less people, but the idea was that there would just be lots of options for people when they were driving, and there will be variable message boards that let people know when they're coming in from various routes, which way to go, as well as on the website.
How long, okay, that, that makes sense. I understand the, the safety issue on the connector, because it is, it comes up quick, and I can see that happening. How long are those message boards going to be up?
I think they're going to be up until we deem that, that's not necessary. So, basically, Patriot Care has agreed to kind of just reevaluate it every so often. I, and, you know, as Eric said, since there are, a number have opened up without any traffic issues, we're hopeful it's not going to be very significant.
Thank you.
All set? Council Leahy?
Just one quick question I forgot to ask. Do you have to be a Mass resident, like if cars come down from New Hampshire or Vermont? How does that work?
Eric, can you answer this?
Oh. So, technically speaking, I think no. You have to, merely have to prove that you're 21 years old.
Okay.
Sorry.
Now, then, bringing that back into New Hampshire, that's a different story, but while they're here, they can buy in Massachusetts, transporting it across state line to a state that's not.
Kind of like fireworks in New Hampshire.
It's the other way around. It's our version of fireworks to New Hampshire.
I, I did want to make one other quick point that I forgot to mention, which is that their opening hours will be from 10:00 in the morning until 8:00 in the evening, so they will not be impacting rush hour traffic in the morning at all. And our, our belief is that the, the opening later like that will minimize any impacts they'll have on afternoon traffic, because there won't be a hard stop in the middle of rush, afternoon rush hour.
We all set? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Manager. Next, we have petition response, 15-minute parking on Appleton Street. Madam Manager?
Oops, sorry. I have Jerry Nutt's mic again. In this particular response, due to the facts that Natasha, who is here, can address, in terms of the 15-minute parking, she's not recommending it, and, and the reason being there are already two parking spaces there. I don't know, Natasha, if you want to speak to the rationale as far as not recommending.
In this location, there's actually a dedicated parking lot for the business, and they were requesting three 15-minute parking spots on a section of Appleton that has two-hour parking. It, I just, it seemed unnecessary to dedicate three, you know, given the parking issues that we have in the city. That was my rationale.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you. I need a motion to accept and place and file, by Councilor Kennedy, and seconded by Councilor Milonazza. Thank you. Next, we have 5.4, Communication Appoint Kerry Regan Genesee to Historic, Historic Board as Greater Lowell Borough Association Member. Need a motion to adopt?
So, motion to adopt.
By Councilor Cirillo, seconded by Councilor Conway. Roll call. Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazza?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Absolutely.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
That's nine yeas. Yes, Madam Manager?
Attorney Regan Genesee is here. Mr. Mayor?
Welcome.
Hi.
Thank you for accepting the petition.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Donahue, and thank you, members of the council. As somebody who both lives and works in historic buildings downtown, I'm really excited to be able to be a part of continuing the great preservation work that Lowell is doing. So, thank you very much for the appointment. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Communication to Appoint Mr. James Wild as the at-large member to the Historic Board. We're going to vote on just Mr. Wild and withdraw Mr. Lockhart's name, as he was appointed at the prior meeting. So, I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded by Councilor Cirillo. Roll call.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazza?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Okay. Next, 6.2, Vote to Authorize the City Manager to Execute Temporary Access Agreement with Wind Development Regarding 193 Jackson Street, 239 Jackson Street, and Cave, Parcel 8 and 9 of the Hamilton Canal District there. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Temporary Access Agreement between the City of Lowell Wind Development Company Limited Partnership Wind Development, routes of the 193 Jackson Street and 239 Jackson Street, also known as Parcel 8 and Parcel 9 of the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, Lowell, Mass. Need a motion to adopt? Move to approve. By Council Elliot, seconded by Councilor Conway. Roll call. Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazza?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Absolutely.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas. Yes, Madam Manager?
Attorney Regan Genesee is here. Mr. Mayor?
Welcome.
Hi.
Thank you for accepting the petition.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Donahue, and thank you, members of the council. As somebody who both lives and works in historic buildings downtown, I'm really excited to be able to be a part of continuing the great preservation work that Lowell is doing. So, thank you very much for the appointment. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Communication to Appoint Mr. James Wild as the at-large member to the Historic Board. We're going to vote on just Mr. Wild and withdraw Mr. Lockhart's name, as he was appointed at the prior meeting. So, I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded by Council Cirillo. Roll call.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazza?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Okay. Next, 6.2, Vote to Authorize the City Manager to Execute Temporary Access Agreement with Wind Development Regarding 193 Jackson Street, 239 Jackson Street, and Cave, Parcel 8 and 9 of the Hamilton Canal District there. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Temporary Access Agreement between the City of Lowell Wind Development Company Limited Partnership Wind Development, routes of the 193 Jackson Street and 239 Jackson Street, also known as Parcel 8 and Parcel 9 of the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, Lowell, Mass. Need a motion to adopt? Move to approve. By Council Elliot, seconded by Councilor Conway. Roll call.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazza?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Okay. Next, 6.2, Vote to Authorize the City Manager to Execute Temporary Access Agreement with Wind Development Regarding 193 Jackson Street, 239 Jackson Street, and Cave, Parcel 8 and 9 of the Hamilton Canal District there. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Temporary Access Agreement between the City of Lowell Wind Development Company Limited Partnership Wind Development, routes of the 193 Jackson Street and 239 Jackson Street, also known as Parcel 8 and Parcel 9 of the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, Lowell, Mass. Need a motion to adopt? Move to approve. By Council Elliot, seconded by Councilor Conway. Roll call.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazza?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?[1606.48]
And I've talked to the Chief of Police and the Chief, the Fire Chief too. And they also mentioned another name, and I'd like to add that to the list, and that was Dr. Maria Veyal Borison, who is the housemaster at Lowell High School. And I was told that she stopped and helped out translations and so forth, and then also went to pick up food for the people, which is, again, excellent. It was everyone pulling together as a real team. Thank you.
And I'll also mention that Steve Nacho from the Building Department brought pizzas to the firefighters as well. So, everybody was pitching in.
Very nice.
Thank you. Next, 5.6, Communication, City Manager requests out-of-state travel has been withdrawn. Next, we have votes from the City Manager. Vote to accept and expend $5,000 from the Mass Cultural Council District Initiative Funding Grant. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the City Manager behalf of the City of Lowell to accept and expend funds in the amount of $5,000 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council District Initiative Funding Grant. I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Conway. Roll call. Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
That's nine yeas. Okay, next, 6.2, Vote to authorize the City Manager to execute temporary access agreement with Wind Development regarding 193 Jackson Street, 239 Jackson Street, and cave parcel eight and nine of the Hamilton Canal District there. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the City Manager to execute a temporary access agreement between the City of Lowell Wind Development Company Limited Partnership Wind Development routes of the 193 Jackson Street and 239 Jackson Street, also known as parcel eight and parcel nine of the Hamilton Canal Innovation District Lowell, Mass. Need a motion to adopt. Vote to approve. By Counsel Elliott, second by Counsel Conway. Roll call. Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
That's nine yeas. Okay, next, Madam. Yes, Counsel Leahy.
Question for the manager, if you don't mind, through you. So these two parcels, are they going to start developing them pretty soon?
Yes. Yeah, this is access to do their environmental testing, and so they will be beginning that. And I believe they expect in the spring to be breaking ground.
Okay. All right, that's good. Because ever since Counsel Elliott recommended me to help hang those flags up for the artist, Barbara Poole, I've been over there for like three years, so I appreciate that it's being developed now.
And we will. I know Counsel Noon had asked for a tour and a tour of the Signature Bridge. And given the work and activity out there, we're planning on something in April or May that we'll schedule at the convenience of the council.
Counsel Elliott.
My, Counsel Leahy does a very good job hanging those banners.
Okay. Thank you. Everybody all set? Yes, Counsel Elliott.
I just want to add, I think this is an exciting step, Madam Manager, for development in this project. It's a long time coming. And I know planning development in your office has been diligent in moving forward on these two parcels. And I think it's an exciting beginning for lots more development that's going to go forward. But with the bridge and the utilities, all the planning that we've done for the last 10 years, at least decade, is we're going to start seeing some activity. So while it's just temporary access, it really is a big step forward, so great work.
All set. Thank you. Next, we have Vote to Establish Municipal Facility Stabilization Fund pursuant to Mass General Law 40, Section 5B, fourth paragraph. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. To establish a municipal facility stabilization fund as authorized with Mass General Law 40, Section 5B, Paragraph 4. I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Cirillo. Roll call. Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
That's nine yeas. Okay, next, we have a report of the Subcommittee on Public Safety. Counsel Noon, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the Public Safety Subcommittee met tonight. Mr. Mayor, attending was on the Subcommittee, Counselor Leahy, Counselor Malanazo. Also in attendance, Counselor Rodney Elliott and Counselor Rita Mercia. And Madam Manager was also in attendance, Chief Richardson and some team from the gang task force. From UTech, we have Maokang, Linda, Bissett, Nichelle Sandler. And from the Mass High Career Center, we have Heather Donovan. So they all spoke of the great collaboration that the team has or that LPD have, the local police, have had with them. They prayed, the local police, in terms of those collaboration with their agency and other law enforcement agencies to address and to help solve violent in our city. So this is what UTech said when they talk about the LPD. They're saying that the LPD had provide, over the years, a great collaboration and working with them to address issues of gang and violent in our city. Their services, the age of kid, between 17 to 25. The aim is to reduce recidivism. The street worker program actually done a fantastic job. They actually do entry, re-entry with a number of sheriff offices, including Metisex and Essex and DYS. They doing visiting in the jail and the locked up. They also visit at home. And they also offer some programs as well. So the question Counselor Malanazo asked UTech, or maybe the whole team, is that how do you deal with peer pressures? And I will let Counselor Malanazo, you know, comment on that respond. But let me go on by saying that UTech did respond to a recent violent. They actually put up the one-minute video that's basically simply say violent is not normal. This video now is on the City of Lowell Police Department website. They asked us as a council and the citizen of Lowell to join them online and sharing it. So it's, the idea of this video is to break, work to break the cycle, the cycle of violent in our city. Then the Career Center, Mass High, the Career Center have done a lot of work on diversion effort. They work on kid from the age of 14 to 24. The idea is helping kid, those who dropped out, get GED, get job. They're looking to hire the summers roughly between 50 to 60 young people to summer job. So those are reports, but also Counselor Elliott also suggests, because this all tie into the opium epidemic in our city. You know, Counsel Elliott mentioned the meeting that Congresswoman Trahan, Lori Trahan, have had in Mathuen. That is, was a great meeting on issues of opium epidemic and how to combat it or address it. They have a various number of people. As the chief said, you can arrest your way to free violent in our city. You can not do that. You have, you need to have this collaboration of everyone involved. Come out of it was the council Subcommittee because of Counsel Elliott, asked that the City Manager prepare a letter to federal delegation regarding combating the opium epidemic in our city. I think those are, those came out of the Subcommittee meeting. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Counselor Leahy and/or Counselor Malanazo, but first Counselor Malanazo comment on the respond to his question, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a very good meeting. It was very informative. And as Chairman Noon indicated, the question had to do with dealing with the peer pressure from the various young people that are finding themselves trying to stay on the straight and narrow. And they talked about communication, they talked about outreach, they talked about follow-through. But most importantly, they talked about home visits, where they go out, UTech goes out four or five times a week to different homes to make sure that the young adults, if you will, are really following the work plan. And they also talked about having food and dining with them and bringing them into UTech. So I think that that type of attentiveness to the young people is really helping with the recidivism rate, as Chairman Noon had mentioned. So again, I thought it was a very good, very good meeting. And certainly, the Superintendent of Police, Kelly Richardson, is doing yeoman's work and working in the various partnerships that we have throughout the community. So, thank you, Chairman Noon.
Thank you. Counsel Leahy, do you have anything?
No, I don't really have anything to add. It was a great meeting, good information, and you know, it's great to see UTech and all the organizations working with the police department.
Mayor, if I may want, if I may add, one other thing, that thanks to Governor Baker's, the Shannon Grant that are coming to our city has increased tremendously. This year, we got $581,000. Those money was spread to some of the organizations like Boy Club, Low Community Health, the Teen Block, YMCA, CMAA, Low Police Academy, Low High School Police Academy, something like that, and UTech. So those money go into good use. And a lot of the collaboration that the police have done, our city police have done with the state and federal enforcement as well. So, thank you.
I need a motion to accept this report as a report of progress by Counsel Malanazo, second by Counsel Mercia. Thank you. Great report. Next, petition. Yes, Counsel.
I just wanted to say, it was very good of you. I just want to say a couple of words about the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting. I did attend, and I think the collaborations and the relationships that have been established, as mentioned by Counsel Noon, are paying dividends from years and years of development. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the Chiefs of Police meeting that we asked the chief about, that he attended in Methuen, that was hosted or certainly attended by Congresswoman Trahan. And it's a good motion that we're bringing forward to send a letter or thought it was a resolution. But I think we need to take it a step forward, Mr. Mayor, and take a leadership role, and that is to reach out to other mayors. This certainly is not a, it's not just a regional issue, it's a national issue. But we're hit hard in the Merrimack Valley, and I believe that was one of the, you know, it was an impetus behind that meeting when it comes to drug and fentanyl distribution and use. And I think it's incumbent upon us to, and by the way, the chief did indicate that he had U.S. Attorney Andrew Lelling in his office, and he's ready, willing to put what resources necessary. Those resources have to come from the federal government. We have, we have certainly dedicated more resources in a number of years with police officers and in the vice, collaborating with the state police. But it's a national issue, and as Counsel Noon has mentioned in his report, the chief was clear, we cannot arrest our way out of this. It's stopping it at the borders, and it's coming in the borders, for some reason, more easily, if you will. So I think if we can reach out and put a letter together, signed by Merrimack Valley, whether city managers and/or mayors, I think that carries more weight as we send it down to our state U.S. Senators and our U.S. Congressmen. And I know it's a little bit of an effort to do that, but I'm sure they would be willing to engage Haverhill, Lawrence, Methuen, et cetera, you know, all the way down to this end. So I, I just think us sending a letter is very important, but I also think if members of Congress receive letters from an entire region with representatives, I think that would be also helpful. So that was by way of the motion, and hopefully we can carry through.
I think you've outlined an important issue. Do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
Everything I just said in the form of a motion, that we reach out, and I don't know if it's the manager or you, but.
Counsel Conway.
So.
Okay. Thank you. No, this is an important issue, and I'll be glad to work with the chief on that and report back to the council, the next steps that we take.
I think there are certain regions in this country that are hit more hard with this epidemic. And I think this region and Massachusetts warrants more resource and more attention. And the way to do that is, you know, is to reach out for those national, federal resources.
We've been hit hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Claims, Property Damage Motion, two property damage motions to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation. Need a motion by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon. Next, on the miscellaneous, Lena Penn requests permission to address council regarding parking along Warner Street, Warner Lanza Street. Is Lena Penn here?
Hi.
Just present your name again and your address.
Oh, my name is Lena. So I just didn't know what else to do but to come speak here on the issues on my street. So I live on a dead-end street, and it's kind of hard for parking, especially since the people who live in front of me had opened their back gate, like a fence. So they took out their fence, and now they have a backyard parking, a side parking, meaning like their driveway, and also in front of their own home, which is on a different street. The issues with them opening their fence, I'm now left with like no parking. And when the snow comes, there's nowhere to plow our snow. It was kind of like I had to do something about it since I tried to put my trash, like, you know, we're only limited to one side of the street. So I put my trash on the other side, along a fence, blocking nobody's driveway. And you know, my neighbors, we did try to talk to our neighbors, but you know, I'd seen my neighbors putting my trash can in the middle of the street. And I had asked them, why would you put the trash in the middle of the street if it's not blocking anything? Their response was basically like, we don't, I don't want it near our fence, it smells. So like, at that point, there was no really talking anymore. And again, like the snow, there's nowhere to plow the snow because I'm only left to one side. I have a three-story house, and you know, my tenants, one of them have newborn twins, and it's snowing outside. I don't think it's fair that they have to walk down the street or, you know, find parking. It's just complicated. And there's nothing much that I can do. So I just figured I'd come here and try to see if I can get some help with that.
Okay. Thank you. I just need a motion to refer this to the Law Department for a report and recommendation. By Counsel Conway, second by Counsel Cirillo.
Can I just ask the petitioner a question? So is, I understand a trash issue and neighborly or non-neighborly, is the issue that the gate is open that is better, or when it's closed, it's, and is there a requirement that that be closed for some particular reason?
So I wouldn't call it a gate. It was a fence at one point.
Fence.
Yeah. And then they just ripped the fence off. So they transformed it into a parking. So now they're parking in their, what was considered their backyard. So with them, with two houses, they both had opened their fences because it was one long fence. So now with the fences open, you know, we're only limited to one side of the street. And again, my street's a dead end, so the trash, people can't make their way around. Like they can't turn around, it's only on one side. So asking me to pull my trash all the way down the street just for it to be picked up, it's like, I'm not blocking anybody's driveway, I'm just simply along a fence.
Counsel Noon.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This sounds like, you know, it's not happened before, but since the neighbor opened a fence, that take away her parking and/or plowing snow too. So there's no way to plow snow to, don't know where to. Then also take away her parking, the open that fence. So is that fence, the question is, is that fence, or the opening of that fence, is that legal? Or is that, you know, so maybe something to look into. Also, the other things too, is that, sounds like as well, that, I mean, the neighbor rather uptight, I mean, you can't, I mean, you can't put a couple hours, one day in a week, put a trash can nearby. What's wrong with that? You know, so I mean, I mean, well, I, now that you, Mr. Mayor, referred to the Law Department, I hope that we can help to resolve this for this young lady.
Counsel Mercia, then Counsel Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you very much for taking the time to come down here. Sometimes people pick up the phone and call, but yet you put it, took the time to make a petition, you came down to speak on it. It must truly be troubling to you. I understand that. So if we could possibly send an inspector over to this area and assess the situation and get a report on that, because I don't know that you can just take a fence down and take a yard and make a parking spot out of it. I think something is not right here, and it impacts the neighborhood, I understand that. And let me tell you, if you put your trash in front of my house, I think all receptacles have covers, and I don't think we smell that, so.
Well, I understand, you know, it shouldn't be in front of someone's home. But again, it's the back side of their house, so their house is actually on Claire Street.
Right, right.
And my street is Warner Lanza. I just wish I took, you know, I had printed out pictures, but, so it's not like it's in front of their home, it's the back, which is where they opened their fence. And again, it's not, it was not blocking anybody's driveway. And they didn't even, you know, instead of coming to speak with us, I have security cameras, and I seen her just pulling the trash and just leaving my trash bins in the middle of the street.
That's why I want an inspector over there to assess the situation, if that's all right with you. That's what I would recommend. And I don't know if I need that in the form of a motion, but I'd like to make the motion to do that.
Counsel Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You live at 122.
I do.
And do the people, your neighbors, do they own the property too?
Well, I, my parents own the home. And you're speaking of the neighbors that live on the Claire Street.
That took down the street. Yeah, took down.
The one home, I don't believe so, because it's like a really tall story building, so it might, could be like a multifamily home. The house next door, I'm not sure. It could just be one family home, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Mayor, I would, if you would consider amending a motion to refer to the City Manager's office rather than the Law Department. If it's referred to the City Manager, then they can, the City Manager has got the wherewithal to get involved with the inspectors and any other department that's necessary, the police department and so forth, and it just might streamline the situation.
I think you're correct. Any second.
Yes, yes, we'll do that.
Madam Manager.
Thank you. And we will, we have your contact information, and we'll contact you.
Only because my parents don't speak English well, so everything would just, you know, be easier with me.
We'll go through you.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
Okay, we're all set.
Thank you.
We have the motion. Next, we have on the miscellaneous, Lee Properties LLC requests installation of overhanging signs for Bridge Street, London Met, located at 485 Bridge Street. Motion to refer the law department.
So moved.
Report by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Malanazo. Next, we have White Street resident requests, new resident parking program proportions of Fourth Avenue, Mount Hope Street, White Street, Avon Street. A motion to refer the law department for a report and recommendation.
So moved.
By Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Mercier. Is anybody here to speak on any of those? Okay. National, next, 8.5 National Grid requests installation of electric conduits on Quebec Street between Blossom and Maple Street. I need a motion to revert a public hearing on March 12, 2019 at 7:00 P.M.
So moved.
By Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Malanazo. We're all set with that. Next, we have city council motions. First motions, I'm sorry.
Hi. I was here for the petition for the National Grid for the Quebec Street. My name is Tanisha.
I apologize.
My name is Tanisha Minden, I'm here for behalf of National Grid. We are, this work is to support the commercial load for the Markley Data Center. The reasoning for this is we are alternating an existing.
So this is basically going to a public hearing, you know, so we don't really have to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, March, March 12.
Okay.
March, March 12.
All right, well, I'm over-prepared.
All right, March 12. It'll be a public hearing.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Next, we have city council motions. Counselor Noon requests city manager work with Metrosex North Register Dean Richard Howe Jr. to compile a report regarding amounts of money paid to the Community Preservation Act, CPA by Lowell residents, continued from February 14, 2019. Need a second? By Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Noon?
The motion actually speak for itself, Mr. Mayor. I'm waiting for the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a motion by Counselor Noon. Counselor Kennedy requires city manager, requires city manager review boards and commissions to determine whether additional associate and/or alternate members should be added to assist with quorum requirements and to help foster greater public participation. No need for a second, there's a registered speaker? Oh, no, it's not this one, not this one, sorry. Not this one, okay. Counselor Noon?
I thought this is important for three reasons, Mr. Mayor. One is that we do this to create diversity and citizen participation in our local government. Second, I would say you build succession, you know, in board and commission. That way, when you have associate or alternate, that associate and alternate, when the actual position open, this individual would then already acquire the knowledge, the skill that step on, step in and fully carry the work. The other part that I feel that is important is that this is a quorum, quorum issues, or for those board or commissioner who have recused themselves from, you know, a particular gender item that they cannot sit on. So those are the three reasons I think is important, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes, I was, Mr. Mayor, I was happy to co-sponsor this motion. I think it's a good motion. I think the, the whole idea of having alternates and having them sort of get on the job training is probably a good one. I think more than that, for some of the boards that deal with more technical issues, such as the Conservation Commission, the Board of Appeals, Planning Board, it would be good if we had a train, training for them as, as a requirement along the way. I think that's something that's been brought up before in the past, but I do believe that I, I saw a training session for Planning Board members maybe back in 2011, and I think it was held in the, in the mayor's reception room at that time. So, you know, a video like that might exist for each of those, I'm not sure, but, but I got to think there are videos like that for, for those three. There may be other boards where it would be helpful as well, but they don't come to mind for me right now, but I, I, overall, I just think this was a, I think this is a good motion.
Good idea. Any further discussion? Thank you. Next, a motion by Counselor Mercier, request city manager have transportation engineer revisit the traffic lights at the corner of Broadway and Pottucket Streets in front of the Humane Society and see if change is possible to a blinking pedestrian crossing light. Need a second by Counselor Leahy, Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have someone registered to speak, but he didn't come here. He's the one that asked me, as you know, we are all messages of, messengers of the people, I'm bringing his message forward. I gave Natasha Vance his phone number and his name, so she can get in touch with them to, maybe has more details about it. That's, that's very good. So she has his phone number, and she'll get in touch with them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you. Next, we have by Counselor Cirillo, request city manager have proper department provide city council with newly drafted 10-year City of Lowell partnership for change action plans to end homelessness. Need a second by Counselor Kennedy?
Hi, yes, thank you. I have our City of Lowell Partnership for Change Action Plan to End Homelessness that was produced in June of 2008, and it's a 10-year plan, so it ended in June of 2018, and it's 2019, and I would like to have a plan put in place, because we did have, we actually had the mayor's challenge to end veterans homelessness, and as of August of 2017, thanks to the hard work and effort from then-mayor Kennedy, we were one of, we were the second city in the state of Massachusetts to end veterans homelessness, and I would like to possibly be the first city in the country to end homelessness here in Lowell, because if we adhere to our plan for, to end homelessness, we can possibly end homelessness like we did for our veterans, and that's the goal. So, so that's, that's the plan. I would like to see a draft of, of the 10-year plan. Thank you.
Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think this is a very thoughtful motion. This is, this is an issue that we talk about very often, and it's, and we're not the only community that, that has this as a, as an issue. It's, it's everywhere, and, and so I think it is good to have a plan in place. It also would be good to see how we did with the first 10-year plan, and see what kind of improvements we made by, with that 10-year plan, and maybe make improvements to the new one. Thank you.
You, community teamwork is also doing, as you know, a lot of work in this area. You think we should have them at a subcommittee meeting to discuss, give the, the whole council some information? I'm sorry.
Um, yes, CTI had a youth homelessness summit in June of 2018, so to, to possibly work with CTI on this, this plan, I think would be a fantastic thing.
Yeah, I mean, provides us council with more information. Both agree?
I, I think that's an excellent idea. Mr. Mayor, and I'm assuming that the maker of the motion thinks it's a good idea as well, so.
Oh, yes.
Okay, no, good motion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Elliott?
We've appointed a number of new members to the Hunger Homeless Commission recently, and I, I know that they have been meeting regularly and engaged, so I think it'd be important to include that, that party in part of the discussion.
You're correct, yeah, thank you. Next, by Counselor Conway, request city manager work with the appropriate departments to develop a report that will explain how the city complies with and implements the federal state law, U.S. Lactation Room Law. Need a second by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was asked to, to put this motion on, as some of us might know that there is a federal, actually a federal and a state law, the U.S. Lactation Room Law. And I think it's important that we, as a city of Lowell, can attract the, I think, the best candidates for employment here in the city, and therefore, in order to do that, I think it's important that we have to compete, and not just financially, but I think also we have to talk about a benefits package, and, and I think it's important today that we include how we care for our employees, treat them and respect them, respect them, and with dignity. And in a situation like this here, and again, I'm glad we, I brought this forward, I think that, keep in mind that our employees, if we look at the different departments, we invest a lot of time, energy, and money in training, and I think it's important that we try to keep these people, and, and therefore, you know, we look at, at young mothers, and we'd like to obviously support them, and we want to keep them here as, as part of the, the city and the, the workforce. So what I'd like to do is if, if we could have a report on how we, how we implement that law, and if there are any ways, if there's any situations that we have to improve or make changes, I think it would be, I think it would be advisable. So I appreciate that, that report. Thank you, madam.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, that is a very thoughtful motion, some type of a motion that I, as a woman, should have made, but I never thought of it. I'm very glad for the maker of the motion to have made that, how brave of you and thoughtful, because it is an important issue. It will never affect me right now, but that's okay. It'll affect other people. I think it's a wonderful motion, and I just wanted the maker of the motion to know that. Don't you agree, Kara? It's a good motion.
All right, thank you. Any announcements?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Kennedy?
I'd just like to say that I think it's a good motion too, and I'd also like to remind Counselor Mercier that men can be thoughtful as well.
Yes, thank you for that.
You won't need that room, though, Ed.
Any announcements? Need a motion to adjourn? No, by Counselor Cirillo, seconded by Counselor Noon. Thank you.